Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Board of Supervisors, Township of Warminster, for Thursday, October 9th, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave servicemen and women serving overseas. All right, so before we begin announcements, well, I'd like to announce we did have an executive session before the meeting, and we talked about litigation, real estate, and that's about it. Right, okay. That's about all I have, welcome everyone. We have a real short meeting, we have the Phillies on right now, I believe it's a tie game. I do want to welcome Jen, our new woman.
Hi, Jennifer.
Jen, welcome. Pleasure, welcome aboard.
Nice to be here.
Yes, we're pleased that you're here working, and that's about the only announcements I have, so we'll hand it over to Janice.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, we have a good turnout on the electronics, those of you that can do dual-screen and have the Board of Supervisors meeting on one screen and the Phillies game on the other. I wasn't here last month when we met, and I was at the hospital with my daughter, so I got to do the YouTube thing, which was kind of different, but there wasn't much audience, so log in, sign in, and get to learn new things. We did have some good comments about our paid firefighters are doing a great job, but we're going to save the special announcement from our leader back there, so he can update everybody on the response times, but we're grateful that they're here and doing a great job, thank you.
Just welcome Jen to the group, and it's a crazy bunch, but you'll have fun.
Thank you very much.
Just thank you all for coming, and have a great fall, crisp sunny October.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, folks here and folks at home, thank you for watching the meeting or attending the meeting.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, I do think we have a Warminster Township golf outing, anybody have that date? It's next Friday, correct?
October 17th.
October 17th, so I'm not sure if there's still spots open, but if not, you can contact the Warminster Parks and Rec, Jessica Fox. All right, thank you, everyone. There's no presentations, there's no land use matters, public hearings, ordinances, so we'll go to public comment. I do have a little note here from our tax collector, Nicole Ranier, I'll read it. She apologized for missing the meeting again, she has a family commitment, there's not a whole lot going on, but she'd like to give everyone up a date on the payments. So out of the 10,000, 10,437 bills that were mailed out, they've, she's collected 10,206 payments with 231 remaining, and I thank all the residents once again, as we do every year. We can't operate the township unless people pay their taxes timely, and you do, so we thank you very much. She's working through the school district real estate tax payments, if you're paying by installment, the third installment is due by the end of this month, October 31st. The deadline for the face man is November 14th, and then the penalty period begins, which is 10 percent. Thanks so much to everyone who's already paid, as I mentioned, and if you haven't paid, feel free to reach out to Nicole, you can reach her at 215-443-8282, or email her at taxcollector@warministerpa.org, or visit the website, wwwwarministertaxcollector.com. She's happy to be of assistance, and she does a great job, so everyone feel free to reach out, and happy Halloween. All right. What are we up to, public comment?
Public comment.
Public comment, John, come on up, we missed you, you haven't been here for a little while.
That's what I told him. Yeah, look, he's been working out.
John Prillo, 674 Joseph Avenue. I want to talk about a personal experience that I had recently at the shop, and I want to comment on the police department, and what happened was, we had a medical emergency, and the kid was, in my opinion, he was, he was dead. So I didn't, I was looking for him, I knew he had these issues, so I had prepared in case something would happen, so I had an Arcan in the shop. So I came back from the body shop, and I was over at the shop, and I was looking for him, and I couldn't find him. I asked everybody, I thought maybe he went out on a road test, or, you know, went to get something to eat, or whatever, so I had gotten one of the other guys, and I said, "Listen, you've got to put this engine mount in this car, I can't find Drew," so what happened is, I went around to help him, and put the car in the air, and I looked down, I saw the bathroom light one. So I beat on the door, and, and no answer, I beat on the door again, the doorknob was locked, so I ran to my toolbox, I got a screwdriver, popped the door open, and he was, he was sitting on the toilet, and he was, you know, he was not doing too good. So I called 911, and to the credit of the police, to the police department, I believe they were there within two minutes, which is fantastic. I've been in this township working for 51 years, and I see that these people, that the police department acted so quickly, they took over the situation, and, you know, helped with the, you know, helped with reviving them. Within a couple of minutes, we had the fire management, Mr. Veltten was in, and when I saw him walk into the shop, I had a little sigh of relief, thinking that he was going to help out, and it made me feel good that he was there, I knew he would be overseeing everything, and then the ambulants came, they worked on him for a little bit, they saved this man's life. I want to thank the police department, Joe Veltten, and the fire department, and the ambulance squad, and I do believe in my heart that this board, with all the changes they did with the police department, hiring people, bringing paid firefighters in, and working with, you know, Central Bucks is the ambulance squad, that we have the best crew around, in my opinion. I've been working in Warminster for 51 years, started at 12, I've watched the supervisors come, watch them go, and I just feel that the supervisors should take a little credit too, for saving this man's life, and I appreciate everything that the police department did, Chief Donnelly, and the way he's running things in the township, I think it's going good. I like the way the fire department looks, I like the ambulance squad, and I think it's the best that I've ever seen, you know, in the 51 years that I've been here. I worked in all the gas stations and garages, on street road, and in Warminster for that amount of time, and I just feel that the, what we're seeing now is probably the best I've ever seen, in how the township's being run, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give credit where credit's due, not too many people do it, but most importantly, I wanted to just thank everybody for helping me, because it was a very, very scary situation that day.
Yeah.
And it turned out to be a positive thing, he's in rehab now and things like that, and, you know, everybody knows I give people second chances, I try to make it right for people, and, you know, so the outcome was positive, not a negative one. Because of the quick response was, I wasn't, it wasn't, within two minutes, the police officer walked in, you know, and took over, and then, you know, Joe Veltten walked right behind it, and then the ambulance squad came in, I mean, and they, if you would have seen it, the guys in action, you'd give them all credit, so that's why I came to speak on behalf of what happened, and give you guys a little credit for all the changes that you made to this township, and I think the community's in a better spot than it's ever been.
Great, thanks, thank you, John, thanks for the kind words, and we're happy that, we're thrilled that it was a good outcome, and he's recovering, yeah, yeah, and that's a testament to our police, fire, and rescue, you know, emergency management, they do a great job.
We do have amazing, you are right, all our squads are amazing, and thank you for the kind words.
So with that, yeah, I'd like to just read a part of the emergency management report that we get every month from Joe, and right now it says, "Our average response time with the career firefighting staff is 1 minute and 33 seconds," which is fantastic, hats off to them. Okay, anyone else? All right, being done, we'll move on to the consent agenda, so we'll consider approval of the Board of Supervisors meeting minutes dated September 18th, 2025. We'll consider a resolution to support the PA House bill to require insurance companies to pay the emergency management services directly, consider tax destruction resolution for the destruction of the 2018 tax records, consider census Gatto Service Agreement, the master service agreement for the red light cameras, and consider CN 2025-02 Curb Ramp Change Order Number One, and the proposal, proposed update to the township's spill prevention control and countermeasure, otherwise known as the SPPC plan, correct, Craig?
Correct.
And they're a lot of fun to write, I've done plenty of them in my life, so that's it, is there a motion to?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, being done, let's, any questions or comments from the public? Being done, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Anybody complains, we'll be talking about the red light cameras shortly, isn't that correct, Chief?
In December.
We can't wait.
In December?
We can't wait.
Okay, I know, it's, people will complain, but it is, it is very effective in saving people's lives and slowing people down from blowing through red lights, so, and if you're on Waze or any of the other ones, they let you know where the red light cameras are, so you're even more aware of what's going on. All right, there is no bill list tonight, because we moved the meeting up, and John is absent today, he won't have a financial statement for all this, unless you have it, Tom?
It is in our packets, and we will be posting it to the website tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, no unfinished business, and then we have new business, which I'm happy to, I'm happy to say that we're going to, that we have, I want to ask for a motion for additional 2025 funding for the volunteer fire companies, which is Warminster Fire Department and Harshville Fire Company.
Motion.
For volunteer firefighter retention, okay?
Motion!
Is there a second?
Motion, second.
Okay, so, Tom, would you like to touch on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have with us a chief, a couple of chiefs, and Joe's here, so they'll correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure they will.
We had, we had a couple of meetings earlier this fall to discuss how the volunteer fire companies are, are setting, setting up plans and programs to encourage the active fire, the volunteer firefighters to stay active, and one of the things that is, is key to that is providing some funds that they can award to each one of the firefighters, based on the amount of responses, or turnouts, I don't know the right term, that they, that they make each year, and so what we're, we're proposing, Mitch can't wait to get to that podium.
What we're proposing is...
He's going to jump the wall.
For this year, is for $20,000 apiece to each of the companies, to help seed the program, and then we're going to work on a more permanent funding structure during the early months of 2026, and I think I have said that correctly.
Yes, I believe so. Yeah, and this is, this is a great incentive program, we want to retain high-quality, well-trained firefighters, volunteers, and I know Mitch and Eric, we've had, you know, it took us a while to get here, but we got here, and, you know, and next year, we'll, as I said, in the next couple of months, we'll sit down and we'll figure out how to keep this going, and how to make it better, and improve everything, and retrain, or retain, and retrain, high, high-quality, well-trained firefighters, so, you know, it was a little, it was, you know, we'd like to give more this year, but it was kind of something that popped up suddenly, so we have to work within our budget restraints, and I'm happy that we can do this much to start, to seed it, I'm thrilled. Joe, do you want to come up and?
Okay, I just have one comment, Ken, I'm just glad, you know, when we originally hired the firefighters, and, and I was with Ken during some of the meetings, and yes, they did get heated, however, look at the squad we have now, you guys are the best in the county, heck, I might say in the state, you guys are amazing, and I just want to thank you all for a job well done. Thank you.
I agree with you, Stephen.
They're safe.
Yeah, John, that's right. Take it when it comes, that's right.
So, yeah, they are, they're doing exceptional work during the day, they're training, they're doing the fire inspections, so, I mean, they're really, they're out there in the public. We had a great training event today, and that ties in with the single-minded view we have with the fire service, career volunteer, you know, we tried to, like, tried to today, incorporated some technical rescue training, and a building we had an opportunity to train in, and we had volunteers, we had EMS, we had career guys, we had Bucks County's technical rescue support team was there, so it was kind of a lot of agencies working together, a lot of people working together, and that's the teamwork we're trying to maintain. You mentioned that our response times, the volunteer, the numbers I gave you for the volunteers for everyone, it's like, I think it was four minutes or somewhere around there, I mean, these guys are still churning, they're getting up in the middle of the night, they're coming out on the weekends, doing the training, and they're responding to fires in Warminster, and it's trying to help our residents. The intention of our discussions all this year, because it didn't happen in one meeting, the two fire companies met together, Chief Shapiro, Chief Gacho, and then we have President Faals, Joe Faals from Warminster Fire Department, President John McFeely, they had all met internally, looked at some target areas they want to do to incentivize people to still get up in the middle of the night, in the rain, in the winter, and all that stuff after a whole day of work.
Protect the residents, yeah, it's fantastic.
And then, and then redo some type of retention program, so that we can keep them for years, and years, and years, and so I think we had a good meeting together with you guys, and we came to some conclusion for this year, and, you know, I think to your words, we weren't expecting it, but it was nice to get it, and then the goal is, yeah, build some kind of foundation.
Did he say that loud enough for everybody to hear?
We'll tell you that every time you say a number, they double it.
I know, I know, Warminster Day was 20,000, then as I walked three steps later, it was 25, and then 30.
Whatever becomes a motion, it's still floated until you vote it in, but, but, yeah, the goal is to make this a foundational thing, that the residents are supporting, you know, get some buy-in, get it in, keep our volunteers strong, and be a powerful fire service in Warminster Township, all around, day, night, weekends.
Yeah, and Joe, and as Mitch and Eric and you tell me all the time, it's a struggle to get new volunteers, and that's nationwide, that's just not here.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, Warminster, and again, thank you for the 25,000 for each department.
Before you walk away, it'll be 30, right?
We joked back there, how much was, I said, "I threw so many numbers, it cannot even know what the real number is anymore."
I don't know, I don't know either.
But, so, thank you, I will say that this is the first time since the inception, back in the early 90s, of our incentive program, that we've gotten an increase for it, and kind of elaborate what Tom was saying, it's not just, and we're not the only ones doing this, all of our neighbors are doing this, and they're way ahead of us in most cases on what they do, but it's, there's two things, it's a low sat program, like the service award program, kind of like a quasi-retirement for, you know, how many points you put in, similar to the county system, if you had, you know, 200 points, you get 100%, 150%, and so on and so forth, will go into an account that will build interest until you retire at some point, after so many years of service, so that's keeping the person, it's not making somebody do it, but it's a little bit of an incentive to help, you can look down the road and say, "This is going to pay dividends if you come in at 25." This came up when I first joined, I remember people were like poo-pooing it, all the young guys, and maybe now they are, but looking back, after almost 40 years in the fire department, could you imagine if it started for me back then? It's not going to be a full retirement, but, you know, maybe you get a couple thousand a month extra out of this, or a thousand bucks a month, it's something to entice people to do it, and the same thing with the incentive for the young guys, who want that instant gratification, at the end of the year, when we do these points, and we look at the bucket, and we figure out each point's worth, you know, four, five, six dollars, and times that by their 100, 200 points, if they're getting 1,000, 600, you know, 2,000 for somebody that's literally coming to almost every single call, it's a nice little Christmas thing, maybe it pays for presents for the kids, helps pay for the vacation, all the things when you go home to your spouse, and you can say, "This is, it's helping, it's not a part-time job, I love doing it," but it's a little thank you. So again, from the Warminster Fire Department, thank you, guys, it's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, my pleasure, Mitch, and I know, you know, there's a little nonsense floating around right now about why did it take so long, but you and I, and Eric, and your predecessor, Chris, yeah, we've, we had a lot of conversations, and I always said, "I understand the problem," and, but we had to find a way to pay for it, and now that we're financially solvent, we found a way, we found some extra money, and, you know, and then next year, we're going to work on even improving everything even more, and we really appreciate everyone's service, I mean, it's, you guys don't always do it, you don't do it for the money, that's for sure, you know, but, but the residents have to understand that, you know, they're your neighbors protecting you in a fire, and, you know, and it's, I really appreciate and respect what you guys do.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate what Mitch said, and Joe, we are very appreciative, all the volunteers, to get this program up and running, you know, early, this year, like Mitch said, we weren't quite expecting it this year, we'll gladly take it, and it's good to be able to go back to the guys and let them know that the township is recognizing their work and their efforts and all that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I remember, you made it back safe and sound, huh? Good for you, good for you. Well, I'm, I'm happy to do this, and like I said, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Let's get that my hand on the fly.
I'm surprised Earth didn't say 30 after you started with 25.
This is the first meeting, I have to take an acid at the word.
All right, any comments from the public? All right, being done, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair votes aye, motion carries 5-0. Thank you again. Okay, let's go right to Tom.
Thank you. For the Township Management Report, I just, I want to make just a comment, and I want to say that in the vein of what we've been discussing tonight in the last couple of meetings, that the Warminster Township is in the business of providing public safety, it's the first sentence of duties and responsibilities under the Second Class Township Code, and I'm happy to be part of, my tiny little part, in, in helping the Board of Supervisors with it, with the professionals that we have, and the volunteers, in both the police department and the fire service, as well as the professionals on Evergreen Avenue at the rescue station, you know, there are hundreds and hundreds of, literally hundreds and hundreds, of calls every year, every month, excuse me, in Warminster Township, and to watch the board, over the last few years that I've been here, meet the responsibility, you know, with sobriety, clarity, and an eye towards meeting that goal, and being, being willing to work with, obviously, the police union, with the police command, with the, with the volunteers, hiring the professional firefighters, and assisting the emergency communities whenever we can, I think all five of you, and some of your immediate predecessors, should, should be very proud of yourselves, and, you know, we talk a lot about stuff, you know, we get in the weeds with stuff at these meetings, on projects and this and that, and that's all important, but that, this is the core function, the money comes locally, it stays locally, and lives get saved, and the people that live here, the people that work here, the people that travel through, don't even know where they are, but if they have a problem, we've got the best community, emergency management services community to respond to any of those problems, and I thank you for your time, and by the way, let's talk about our next meeting.
We will talk about our next meeting?
No?
No, okay.
It's scheduled for November the 6th.
November the 6th.
Is everybody okay with that?
Everyone, any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay, November 6th it is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right.
My brother's birthday. I have nothing to report this meeting, other than, "Go Phillies, go Birds, go Flyers."
Yep, yeah, Flyers, do they play?
They're on right now, too.
Oh geez, we got a trifecta going.
They were first.
Trifacta.
They were first.
All right, and as always, last but not least, Mr. Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have our October Engineers Report, I do not have any changes or additions, just want to note that your trail paving project at the community park, your road program, Five Ponds, all the projects going on there, including the dredging of the ponds, the clubhouse, along with Shandell Woods, all those projects are doing great, we're moving along, there's a lot going on, and so far, nothing negative, and I'm very thankful for my staff, and also your staff, and, you know, just adding on, working with Andrew and Jess Mainly on our projects, they've been great to work with, they're very responsive on top of everything, and, you know, it's a team approach to all these big projects, we got a lot going on, as Tom mentioned, in the township right now.
Yeah, we got a lot of great stuff going on.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Thanks, Greg.
I know they milled the Speedway.
Yeah.
Yep, as you mentioned, yeah, we, they milled all the roads in the Speedway, and Morrissey will be in there paving, and they zip, they are fast, so I would expect that to be done in a couple of weeks, two, maybe three weeks, and they'll have that all done.
They move quick.
Yes, they do, and they do a great job. All right, let's go to supervisors' comments, you want to start with Ken?
Yes, please. Folks, I have a couple announcements from Parks and Rec that I forgot to do earlier, I'll make it really fast. Parks and Rec Rec Annual Golf Fouting will take place on Friday, October 17th, at Five Ponds Golf Course, register, golfer sponsor, visit the Parks and Rec website. Annual Holiday House Contest will, decorating contest will open for registration, October 15th, via the Parks and Rec website, residents have it until 14th, December 14th, to register their home in the contest. Annual Tree Lighting Contest will take place on Monday, December 1st, at 6:00 PM, at the administrative building on Gibson Avenue. Event will feature holiday music performed by the William Tannett Magical and Corral, cookies and hot chocolate with Santa's snow, experience and more, this event is entirely outdoor, so dress in courtway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome, Kathy.
Everybody, be safe, it's going to be Halloween, so be very safe with the kids, thank you.
All right, Janice?
I'd like to piggyback on what Kathy had to say, that the leaves are falling, and that it's been kind of moist in the morning, so be careful when you're driving, so it's not slick, and Halloween's coming, so the kids will be out at night, so just be watchful, thank you.
Chuck?
Oh, and bingo, I forgot to mention bingo.
Go ahead, say bingo. No, just that it's a great thing that's happening with the fire department, that's awesome, I'm glad about the, that's going on with, you know, with the fire department, and also just want to say, "Go Birds, Phils, and Flyers." We'll do Sixers, too, why not?
They're not playing right now. Their season's starting.
I have nothing specific, except that we should have a nice fall, I read in a magazine this week that Bucks County is one of the most beautiful places to see autumn foliage, so everybody should go for a ride through Bucks County, go up River Road, go to Peace Valley Park, see the beautiful foliage right now, and I want to remind you that the library is open all week, and it's lots of fun things to do at the library through the winter, check out their calendar, you'll see that there's plenty of things to do, but one of the things they're doing now is they are preparing to have a 50th anniversary celebration, they were going to have it now, and they decided to wait until spring to coincide with the 250th anniversary of the nation, so it'll be a big, fun week when we have that, and be careful on Halloween, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you, Judy. Speaking of 250th anniversaries, I believe our Navy is 250 years old, and they're having, there's a lot of naval ships down at the Navy Yard and across the river, so if you have a little time, it'd be nice to go see that, and I just want to give a shout-out to our great staff, and what a great job they do, I hear a lot, when I'm out in the community, I hear a lot of thanks, I hear some complaints, too, about minor stuff, but mostly thankful, thank you for... too, about minor stuff, but mostly thankful, thank you for, you know, the jobs that everyone does. So, you know, we couldn't do it without you, and, and we appreciate everything that, that the staff and our professionals do for us. We got a lot of great things going on in here. We have a, you know, the new clubhouse being built, we're paving roads, doing what governments, you know, are supposed to do, and provide services for the residents, so thanks again.
Welcome, Jen.
I'm welcome, Jen.
I forgot to say that.
I said it earlier.
You did, I guess.
Oh, you did, okay. All right. So, welcome, Jen from the board.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got it. Thank you very much.